Hello, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. Today is September twentieth, it is quarter one. And I will call this meeting to order. On our agenda number two is our invitation in religion. We have our invitation by Bishop Jim Caldwell from Centering in Catholic Church. And then if Mr. Tony, um, Mr. Bruce, welcome, speaking.
Welcome. Thank you all very much for inviting me to this invitation. It's a privilege. That's how it is, and pray this prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather here, united in your name. Come to us, teach us what we must do, what we must attempt, and what we must accomplish with your help for the citizens of Alice. We implore you to be the author of our decisions. May lack of knowledge not carry us away, may favors not influence us, and may gifts and friendship not affect us. Unite us to you with the gift of your grace, so that we may be one with you and may not abandon our obligation to serve the people of Alice. May our decision be informed with yours, and once we've accomplished our duty, may we know what we've accomplished is for your glory, to Christ our Lord, and for the people of Alice. Amen.
Please, please, the glass, to the hand of your heart, and the fact of the present. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being. Thank you.
And you, Paul.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number three, which is called. And we do have the citizen who did get to address our council. Uh, if it asks, oh, if we get the, uh, if we're going to.
I'll read that, ma'am. Welcome. Welcome to the Alice City Council meeting. All of us, which is designed to help you understand the proceedings that we need. A citizen who has a request for city services or other items of concern which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager. May you, so that you wish to address the city council, please follow the suggestions listed below. Citizens who wish to address the city council about items on the agenda which are scheduled for city action or council action, will have three minutes to express their position. Please indicate on the reverse side. The agenda item number on which you wish to comment, please indicate the subject on the reverse side. All presentations and discussions should be directed to the city council and all questions to the mayor. Any complaints and/or discussion about individuals, personnel, council members, sick staff, or other persons will be out of order and will not be heard by the city council at present. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual following the complaint, and they will be addressed pursuant to the house question and policy. Can I read this?
Thank you.
I can just read this with just a formal. Uh, thank you, Steve. In the essence of time, presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. An individual's speakers' time may be extended by additional three minutes for the approval of a majority of the council members present. There shall be a community, a limit of fifteen minutes allotted of any regular or special council meeting. The mayor or the site officer. For those wishing to refer to council, please select the appropriate time. Please propose a speaker's stand, state your full name and address when you begin your remarks, and order. In order that the official minutes will record your appearances at the city council and set up the topics of interest. You have written those who wish to present to the mayor and council, please furnish an extra copy to the city clerk for the official file. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council. Although council cannot take specific action on citizens' comments, on citizens' comment topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic and council may want, add the item placed on future agenda item. Agenda for action, or two, refer the item to a board commission committee, whether you refer the item to staff for study or conclusion. Finally, you must be signed into speak earlier than fifteen minutes prior to the beginning of any city meeting. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. We do have some citizens that wish to address our council. They have been, uh, few months. If you have to, uh, state your name and address.
My name is Bamanza Silva. I reside at nine zero four U S N, and I'm a proud resident of Alice. To the councilman that says, don't believe everything you hear, to him, we say, let's trust the open records that come from city home. Let's show the public just a few examples of the way business is conducted, and the public can decide for themselves and evaluate whether they should earn, they have, you have earned their trust or not. Citizen comments are no longer allowed during city council meetings. J D A Alice website doesn't allow public comments. Our local newspaper no longer reports on city council meetings or citizen concerns, and the city manager stated that the council did not want to answer emails from the mayor, et cetera. Does that seem transparent to you? According to open records, an evaluation checklist, summary review, et cetera, has never been done in regards to the city manager's job performance. And yet he was awarded and honored with a seven percent increase, plus more incentives based on the city manager's advice, sorry, city councilwoman's advice. While our city employees got a mere one percent. The city manager has chosen to waive ordinances which require having liability insurances for all events, such as the Christmas parade and events sponsored by a city councilwoman, et cetera. The city manager stated at a private meeting that a person who signs a contract would be held liable and not the city. But that's an ordinance, and he waived it himself, and he doesn't mind holding an individual responsible? Then why have an ordinance that says you must provide liability insurance? It is being said that, by many, that the city manager is not going to ask for a contract for their job. There has never been a contract in place for him as long as he has been serving. So why now? Is he preparing for the legal recall, and is he trying to solidify his job at the taxpayer's expense? Three years would almost make half a million dollars taxpayers. It's the responsibility of the city manager to have made sure that there was an ADA coordinator ADA in place. And since he is responsible for over fifty employees, he failed to comply with formal requests and a medical excuse played from my doctor, saying I had a medical condition and should be allowed extra time. He has taken credit or given credit to others for doing the job that the mayor has done or planned or solved. On, and no one, not a single one of you, has bothered to sponsor, not one, a single agenda item. For example, she is instrumental in downtown, the health part, the million dollar grant, but did you all give her credit? Not at all. He then allowed one city tenant to skip out on rent payments, totaling thousands and thousands of dollars, and failed to follow the contract in regard to rightful termination of rental fees. This same man had already endured an abuse of power on social media posts regarding a city councilman that sits up there in regards to the golf event. The city council serves the city and the citizens, not the city manager. We are asking you to be the steward of taxpayers' money and not bestow a contract for someone who certainly isn't deserving. Thank you. I practiced.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Um, we do have another citizen that wishes to address the council, Miss, uh, Priscilla Hope. I didn't, I didn't. Step forward. Your name is.
Good morning. Good afternoon. This is Mayor City Council member Ms. Zach. My name is Priscilla Jones Hope, and I live in Alice. And speaking on behalf of Miss Belinda Silva. The Americans Disability Act is a federal law that makes it illegal for state and local government agencies to discriminate against anyone with a disability. The purpose of the ADA law is to make sure that people with disabilities have the same rights and opportunities as everyone else. Miss Silva has made more than one formal request for accommodations to be made, allowing for at least a couple of extra minutes based on side effects from meningitis and also another rare illness. Her physician's assistant, also, makes peace informing the city of Alice about her voice and trade damage that affects Miss Silva's speaking, and she too has asked that her patients be given extra time to see face and document an ongoing medical condition. One of the areas that the ADA coordinator has is to play a role in preventing discrimination against people with disabilities, including public accommodations, communications, and access to state and local government services. The job requires of the ADA coordinator via resource receiving and working to solve complaints and to work with city officials and administration to ensure facilities or alterations are acceptable. There are many instances where other citizens have spoken and exceeded the three-minute limit at the same meeting, and other citizens were given extra time that extended after the buzzer, and no one stopped her at all. But the second it goes, uh, from Miss Silva, the council stopped her despite medical documentation asking for disability accommodations to be made. Our local school districts have been proactive in making accommodations to playgrounds, sensory classrooms, and center for children. What can we expect for them once they grow up? Will you all discriminate and violate their rights as well because they are autistic, physically impaired, or disabled? According to city records, you would not answer as to when the ADA coordinator was given that job title. Our mayor was honest and emailed me, Miss Silva, with the facts and truth. The public deserves to know and be aware of the disrespect and sensitivity and lack of human decency and moving a reasonable short amount of time, less than five minutes. In prior meetings, at least two people have taken the time to talk about their family accomplishments, and that took more time than what she asked for that concerned citizens. In another meeting, the city attorney said that Miss Silva would be given up to fifteen minutes, and the office said there was a policy in place to reference the time allotted. When she asked her city records, they only gave her guidelines, which is not a policy. In another instance, the city attorney yelled at the court to identify the statute. The mayor is clear that she too can't find that policy. So if you want the truth first, you must become knowledgeable with what the law clearly states about making ADA accommodations. Whether you hurry to create a fill that job without being informed, it's not the fault of Miss Silva. I would like this added to the minutes for public information. Thank you.
I'd like to see any other public comments, but this time, I've been moved to, uh, city council members. She made a question.
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, this morning, I went ahead and I attended a first country regional broadcast, broadband forum. Um, but the mayor was there, and then my team, uh, E C and several other dignitaries from the county, and it was well represented there, and it was very interesting to learn more about it. Um, and, uh, so I'd just like to thank all of us who put it together. It was a very good event. Um, and then we welcomed our, um, our governor, effective, Ray Abbott, to Alice City. Um, he had speech today out there, and we all attended, the city and counties were all there, and the community, so it was very nice to be able to welcome him to our beautiful city. Um, also, just a quick reminder, there are so many, this time of year, there are so, so many wonderful, positive events in our community, that there's flyers going around on social media. Um, you know, if you see them, make sure you share them, because this is something that, as a, as a community, we need to do. We need to go out in the public, you know, and just, you know, for our children to see us doing good things in our community. That's what it's all about, you know, representation of the positive aspects of our city. So, um, if you see them across, I did share them with the Alexxus News, I also shared them with, uh, our Chamber of Commerce, our, uh, city, our subcity Chamber of Commerce, and hopefully, you know, those wonderful events get out there. So, just, just to let y'all know, it's wonderful to, uh, to be out in the community and the future of things, so. Let's have a wonderful October through December, definitely, for the holidays. Have a good show. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And you.
You're welcome.
I, um, I think also wanted to mention, that was a very good forum, we did a, and, and, uh, one of the individuals that helped put that together was, um, Mrs. Maran, along with Mr. McLean, very much. E D C director, and our condolences go out to Mrs. Maran and her family, because she lost her father this morning, so she wasn't able to attend that forum. We just want to offer a condolences to her and her family. Um, also thanking everyone that was, there was amazing for our help, um, in our city, and then we have so many events coming up for our, um, October, so look for those. We're gonna have a lot of.
Lots and lots.
Halloween bash and a lot of stuff coming up, so looking forward to that. And council, I do have two proclamations. We do not have, um, a recipient for these, but I thought they were important to name these. Uh, we're gonna be participating. Uh, Mr. Espartza authorized also some of the ribbons that will be coming in to recognize the teachers. And we'll be wrapping, uh, the trees along city hall to honor our, our educators, so.
Nice.
That was just something that I felt, um, it was something nice to do for our educators. They work so hard out there, so I'd like to read this, but we don't formally have someone here to receive this proclamation. This proclamation is, um, from the office of the mayor of Cynthia Carrasco. Whereas the future strength of Alice, Texas depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to students' achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. And whereas our Alice Independent School District teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID- nineteen crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, and whereas hashtag teachers can is a statewide movement supported by more than a hundred and twenty-five part, partnering, uh, businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Alice City Council joins hashtag teachers can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day and proclaim October fifth, twenty twenty-two to be Alice Teachers Day. Be it further resolved that the Alice City Council encourages members of our community to be a light for the Alice teachers and personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October fifth as a symbol of support for our educators. In testimony whereof, I hereon to set my hand in cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Alice, Texas, on the twentieth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Thank you so much, and teachers out there, we're so proud of you for everything you do for our community and for our students. There is one other proclamation, and if everyone will look at all the beautiful decorations. Thank you, Miss, um, Miss Nellie and Miss Odie. Odie called early and said, I have a Sarapi. I'm gonna get some decorations, so thank you so much. It looks beautiful. It really does. And this is in celebration of our Hispanic Heritage Month, so I do have a proclamation for that. I'm gonna read that, um, council, um, from the mayor's office. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the City of Alice recognizes that Hispanic heritage is American heritage, and we see that influence in almost every aspect of our lives. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And where, whereas the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon, Lyndon Johnson, and expanded to President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight through the legislative encouragement of Congress member Esteban Torres of California to cover the period at which it is celebrated today, September fifteenth through October fifteenth. And whereas the day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and eighteenth respectfully, respectfully, uh, I can't say it, but, and whereas in the words of famed Mexican designer Marisol Peralta, your individuality is important, but so is belonging. Recognize the parts of your culture that have shaped your past and the parts you want to carry with you into the future. And whereas an activist, Dolores Fuerta, encouraged involvement. We are needed. We have to be engaged and get ourselves elected to school boards, city councils, si se puede. And truly, we have seen this locally many times over at the county, school boards, city councils, business, community, and influential activists all throughout our great community. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Alice that on this day, we recognize September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month in recognition of the notable footprints of Hispanic culture in our daily lives. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand in cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Alice, Texas, on the twentieth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on, um, to agenda item number four. Our city manager slash staff reports. Four point one, Texas Water Development Board approves seven million to the City of Alice for a second water source project.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Uh, on September first, I went to the Texas Water Development Board and got to visit with them and gave them a statement about this project. It was on their agenda. This is phase two of our groundwater project, um, and they approved it. We were there. Kingsville has a project also that, uh, that they approved, but, um, I got to visit with the, the two board members they have. They're, they're, they're missing a board member, so there's only two that are present. After the meeting, I got to visit with them a little bit about, with, about our project. But, uh, they did approve the seven million dollar, um, loan. Of that, two, over two million dollars is loan forgiveness. That's a pretty big number, uh, that we have, and the other pro, the other phase one had a loan forgiveness of, uh, uh, what was that one, a million?
It was a little over, I think a million.
A little over a million. So altogether, three million dollars of loan forgiveness from the Texas Water Development Board. But also wanted to kind of, it was kind of exciting. This is the last time that we're in front of them on this project. But this started, I mean, the roots on this project started in two thousand ten to thirteen, uh, trying to find an alternate water supply and looking for, uh, water along the transmission line. We were, did a study back then. I know there was a study done on, on the wells and the aquifer that's along the transmission line. Uh, also talked about rehabbing the water line that comes from Lake Corpus Christi. Uh, and in two thousand fourteen, there was a, an actual, uh, that's when Bill Norris got involved in, in fourteen and did a, a more in-depth study with the aquifer that we're in now, which is a Jasper. But in two thousand seventeen, it is when it a little bit more officially started with the project information form that was submitted, um, and then it got on the. And then it got on the intended use plan from the state in 2017. And so in 2018 was the actual invitation to apply. So, you know, and that happened. So it's been a long time coming. And it went through a lot of different people, a lot of different hands, but it's finally there. You know, they approved that phase two. And so now, you know, the, another agenda item is the financing part of it. And the guys are here from Estrada de Hosa on that. But it's kind of an exciting time because they were, you know, we kind of caught a little bit of the tail end of it, although there's a big portion of the tail end on it. And so hopefully, as we were talking to the Water Development Board, is that if everything goes to plan with, as planned with the discharge permitting and the environmental and the engineering part, that hopefully in the first quarter of 2024, there'll be water actually being produced and running through and blending with our water. So that's kind of the timeframe. There was some talk of some environmental delays, which could push it another six months from there, but we're trying to mitigate that. And so hopefully, we'll be still on the original schedule that we have. So wanted to give you an update on that. That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you. And then we'll move on to presentations. Agenda item number five, 5.1 Update on Parks and Recreation Maintenance Plan. And then 5.2 Update on Multi-Year Street and Infrastructure Maintenance and Repair Plan. Mrs. Medrano?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes. All righty, well, let's get started. Pull up the PowerPoint. Thank you. So, so today I'm here to talk about a couple of projects that we've been working on for a few months. The first is establishing a Park Standards of Care and Maintenance Plan. A little overview of our parks. Our FY '23 adopted budget was $909,917. We have 15 and a half FTEs, and that is the breakdown of the FTEs within that department. And then that's a picture of two of the new tractors that the department purchased this fiscal year. The department manages 12 city parks, which is approximately 80 acres, 10 city properties. And the properties are city buildings such as City Hall, the police station, the substation, our physical assets, really the area around there totaling 54 acres. We have 11 ball fields that the department manages along with 13 public works areas, 90.78 acres, and then 39 areas of right of way or other areas that aren't exactly right of way. And that covers 189 acres. The parks are 80 acres and include the amenities such as playgrounds, receptacles, restrooms, trees, landscaping. So there's more than just mowing at each park. And this is just a high-level map of the city, and the areas highlighted in yellow are the areas that the department mows. So it includes city facilities, parks, and then rights of way throughout the city. I don't know if I have a pointer on here. No, I don't.
Are the crease included? Yeah?
All the lines.
Yeah, all the lines.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, all the, all the yellow and then the, I thought I had a pointer on the remote, but I guess not. It doesn't work. Okay. On TVs. Okay. So every, every area that you see highlighted in yellow there. Just look it up for a second. So this is what we've come up with, and I think you have a copy of this. So this is a standard of care matrix. And what it does is it defines the levels of care, either A, B, C, D, or E. And then the other access indicates what action will be taken there. So you attend, which is litter, remove new growth, apply ant poison, remove weeds, check for low branches, and based on, based on a formula, we decide which parks will be attended either at the A level, B level, C, D, or E level. So that could range anywhere from daily, seven days a week, to monthly. And then the other areas are mowing, emptying receptacles, attending facilities, which is clean and restock restrooms, trim trees, care for the landscaping, park amenities, inspections, placecapes, benches, pavilions, signs, lights, and then weed spraying. You'll see that there's a note there that there's a new treatment in play right now. And so they're spraying and monitoring, and based on how that goes is how the, each of the areas will be defined later. So the next page is, it's a draft of the 12 parks, their level of service. And we've sort of determined priority based on either number of visits or visibility, but mostly based on usage for the park. As you know, we can't get to all 12 on the same day, so we have to have some order of prioritization. And so we're still working through the yearly visits, but you can see that Anderson Park will be a gold or level A because it has quarter of a million visits per year. And that's not individual visitors, it's actual visits. So you have a number of visitors who might visit like 10 times a year or more. Lake Finley has approximately 57,000 visitors a year. Health Park, that asterisk indicates that it's not, the 3,000 isn't the number of visits there per day. It actually doesn't, no, also might receive that many visits, but it's based off of the radius impact. So the number of cars that pass per day is about 3,000. So it is a highly trafficked area. And then I understand that the park is also used for special events. And then Veterans Park, 5.8,000 visits, and we'll add the rest. This is still a working document. And so that is the end of the presentation. This was just a briefing on what we're working on. We do have the same sort of template for city properties, ball fields, public right-of-ways. So it's actually a very robust list. And so once the entire project is finished, we'll come back and show you. But we wanted to give you a preview because we know there's been a lot of rain recently after coming out of drought. And so you might see that there are areas that need to be mowed. And so we wanted to inform counsel that we're working the plan. And Yolanda and her team haven't waited for the entire thing to be completed. They're implementing the plan now, and it's working out nicely. So thank you to Yolanda and her team for all of their hard work. I think we all see them throughout the city every day. And then we have a multi-year street and infrastructure maintenance plan. So this is addressing, now we're sort of transitioning over to public works. So we have three areas, I guess departments, so to say, or orgs within the city that work on either street maintenance, repairs, or new construction. And those departments are street maintenance, water and waste, water maintenance and construction, and special projects. So that's a breakdown of each of the departments, their budgets, and then the FTEs for each of those areas. This is sort of to give a perspective of, you know, the capacity of manpower that we're working with.
We don't have a, is that part in here? I didn't see it.
No, I'm sorry. It's on the PowerPoint, but I'll email this to you afterwards.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So current infrastructure, there's a little note with every project, there is ancillary street work to be done. But this is current funding in play. So we had the 2019 CDBG grant, $300,000, and that project was completed maybe a couple weeks ago or a month ago or so. It's been a little bit. And that work was on San Felipe, Trevino, and Escobar, and that was wastewater infrastructure. And they did do street work afterwards. Joe and his team continue to work on streets that were presented to council as part of the American Rescue Plan Act last year. And so that was a $2 million budget, and so those projects are in progress. We have the GLO $6 million drainage project on the Virginia Street area. That's not started yet, but it is about to kick off here pretty soon. And then we have $355,000 for wastewater infrastructure project on King and North Aransas, not started yet. And then, of course, the combined operating budgets from that first slide for our FTEs and equipment, fuel, or operating expense for the department at 2.5. And they address year-round projects outside of these special grant projects. This is the equipment that the department works with, that have on hand a zipper, water truck, and a roller. They'll be getting an oiler next month, so that's great news. And there's still a need for a chip spreader and a pad foot. And that's what that picture is. It's a chip spreader. FY '22 completed street projects. We have Hobbs, Kennedy, Trevino, Escobar, a part of North Aransas, Triangle Street, Hub Street, and Fusco Avenue. And this is sort of the big multi-year proposed list of projects that we have created. So there's a legend that indicates whether or not it's a water, the combination of either water, wastewater, or street. So it's color-coded in that way. Here's a draft proposed list of waterline utility projects. And like I said, it's multi-year. So we, it's, we're still working on it. So we'll, once it's complete, we'll come back and have a better proposal on the number of years.
That's feet.
Linear, so if you look to the farthest column, it's linear feet or square yards, cubic yards.
Cubic yards.
What addresses that?
That's it. Thank you.
This is the draft sewer line project list. And then the draft street project list. So these projects stemmed from really an initial list of about 32 projects. And then the water and the wastewater sort of grew out of that because you don't really want to do the work on the street without addressing what's underneath. And so we sort of started with that and then worked backwards. And that, and that is the end of the presentation. So just wanted to give counsel a preview on what Demetrio and I and Joe and ICE Engineering have been working on to put together for a working plan to really prioritize the work done by those departments.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind emailing those.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item number six, Consent Agenda. All consent agenda items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. 6.1 Discuss, Consider, and Act Upon Approval of City Council Minutes for August 16th, 2022, August 18th, 2022, August 29th, 2022, and September 8th, 2022. Okay. Any corrections or discussion on? It's a consent agenda.
Mayor, make a motion to accept consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Agenda item number seven, Individual Consideration. 7.1 Discuss, Consider, and Take Action on Ortenance. Okay, wait, I think there was a, is there a different verbiage that needed to be added on this one?
No, just not, just for the motion.
Oh, it's 7.2?
Yeah, it's just for the motion, not for the actual agenda item.
Okay. Discuss, I'm sorry about that. Let me repeat it. 7.1 Discuss, Consider, and Take Action on an Ortenance Authorizing and Approving Publication and Posting a Notice of Intention to Issue Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,500,000 and providing an effective date.
What? I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I was thinking, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Put it over here. It's a reminder. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, for the record, my name is Don Gonzalez with Estrada de Hosa. With me this evening also is Matt Luhon with Estrada de Hosa, as well as Jay Wattis with the law firm of McCall Parker, St. Horton. They serve as bond counsel, and our firm serves as financial advisor to the City of Alice. We've had the privilege of working with the city for a number of years. And as the city manager mentioned in his report earlier, this financing that you're contemplating, this action tonight would be merely to begin the process of giving notice to the public. So I'm going to go through this, but before I get into the presentation, I did want to recognize the number of years and work that we've been able to do with the city manager. Thank you, Michael, for your work and support. Gabe, your Director of Finance, as well as Vanessa Torres and your City Secretary. We've been a lot of coordination on a lot of different things that have to be presented to the Water Development Board applications, and we've worked with the engineers and various others to get this done. So this evening is a continuation of that process. We are just kind of at the, at the next step, if you will, in terms of what we're, what we're doing. So if you go to page one in the presentation, we have the participants in the transaction. The City of Alice would be the issuer of the debt. Estrada de Hosa and Company is financial advisor. McCall Parker, St. Horton is bond counsel. The Texas Water Development Board will be the purchaser of the debt and the provider of the loan forgiveness or grant funds. And UMB Bank is the paying agent and escrow agent. On page two, and feel free to stop me at any time with any questions. On page two, what we wanted to do is give you a little bit of historical perspective on what's been happening with interest rates. As probably everybody knows, the Federal Reserve has been increasing interest rates pretty dramatically here this year in 2022. They're actually meeting today and tomorrow. It's expected that there'll be another 75 basis points or three-quarters of 1% increase by the Fed tomorrow afternoon when they release. So that's pretty much what's anticipated. That's one of a number of increases that they've made. There's more that are expected to come between now and the end of the calendar year. But what this particular page two graphic shows is when the Fed moves interest rates, they move the very shortest-term interest rates. And so if you look at the left side of this table, you'll see that the green diamond represents the current, what we call AAA MMD, which is the index that we work off of for tactics and interest rates. And the blue square represents the average of where interest rates have been going back to the year 2000. And then you can see 1 through 30, assuming you had a 30-year transaction, each year would represent one maturity of the 30 years. And so what the Fed's been doing is increasing the short end, which is the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 years have had the most dramatic impact. And that's because that's where the Fed right now has been putting pressure. What typically happens is you'll see the movement on the shortest end, mostly in year one, will be the most dramatic, and then lesser of an impact on each year thereafter, to where you see, starting at about year 10, they're almost directly on top of each other. And, and so we have seen interest rates move up in terms of current rates. And so we have seen interest rates move up in terms of current rates. Some of you may remember when we did the transaction in 2020, and also, I believe, in 2019, the green diamonds were all well below the blue boxes. And so we were, you know, some of the most historical interest rates that, you know, we've, we've ever experienced. And we don't know if we'll ever be back to those rates again, but we're very thankful that we were able to take advantage of those at the time. But what we're seeing now is where we are for the most part, when you look out from about year 10 to year 30, is right about the average. And so it's not a bad place to be, but obviously we would like to be below that. And you can see down at the very bottom what percentage of the time that we have been below the average. And you can see that in the first 10 years, actually all the way through about year 14, it's less than 50%. And then when you get to about year 14 and beyond, it's, you know, slightly more than 50%. Any questions on that page? Moving on to slide three, I really want to focus just a moment on the bottom right-hand side chart. A lot of what we do is data-driven. And so because the data becomes so important in some of the financial recommendations that we make, if you look at this table, the third column that's highlighted in gray, that's the MMD, which is Municipal Market Data Index as of September the 16th. And that ranges from year one to year 30, from 2023 to 2052. And, and you can see, if you were a natural AAA-rated entity, that's more or less what kind of interest rate you would be looking at if you were borrowing in the marketplace. What we've seen is in one week, the next column, the change in interest rates, that's very unusual. We will typically see somewhere in the neighborhood of about maybe 1, or I should say, even like 0 to 3 basis points in a week would probably be a little more common. But we see this, you know, ranging from about 11 basis points on the low to 18 basis points. That's many multiples of what we typically see in a, in a typical week. And so this leading up to the Fed's actions this coming week, tomorrow in fact, is what's helping to propel these interest rates up very much, very fast, and in a very compressed short period of time. And, and so when we look at the change over the month, from literally a month ago, you can see that it's between 47 basis points all the way up to about 63 basis points. So again, that dramatic in 30 days. And then if you go to the farthest right column, the change in, in one year, between 203 basis points to about 238 basis points, that, that's phenomenal. It's over 2% in, in the course of one year on tax-exempt interest rates. So you can see this, these numbers and the dramatic effect that, that these have incurred in a very short period of time. This brings me to page four, and I wanted to give you that backdrop because sometimes without a little bit of perspective, we don't get the benefit of what the city's been able to accomplish and what you're, you know, moving forward with, with respect to the Water Development Board. So in that top bullet, we are looking at a drinking water SRF program. And you'd be, as the city manager mentioned, this program goes back many years, I think the actual first phase of the first application. I remember coming to the council and making that presentation, I believe, in 2018 for that, and, you know, multiple presentations since then. But now where we are is now for the, this phase of financing. And we have three different pieces, three different components. The city manager mentioned these earlier. $3,934,000 in a subsidized below-market interest rate, the 0% loan, which is for $1,020,000, and then what the Water Development Board calls principal forgiveness, $2,46,000. And that, they don't want to call it a grant, but we all kind of know it's, it's a grant, but they have to call it principal forgiveness in their terminology. The, the next bullet deals with one of the requirements. In order to receive that principal forgiveness, that $2 million of grant money, you first have to draw down the loan funds. So if there's one catch, you know, that comes with this, it's you have to borrow the money first before you get the grant money. So just be aware of that requirement. The, the following bullet talks about the, the $3,934,000 and what those terms look like. They're not final yet because we won't actually receive final interest rates from the Water Development Board until we get closer to the time that we actually come back to you with the bond ordinance that actually says we're going to be issuing the bond. So right now, again, this is just to give notice to the public that you're planning to issue debt. So what we wanted to do is outline for you what these terms more or less look like. So we're looking at a 30-year term on $3,934,000. What we're doing is gradually stair-stepping the debt service up during the first four years. And then what we'll have is level debt service starting in 2027, again, going 30 years. So from 2027 to 2052, level debt service thereafter. The estimated interest rate, if we were actually doing this transaction this week, will actually be 45 days roughly from now, we would be at about 2.85%. Now, if you think back to the numbers that we were just talking about the page before, you would be borrowing at roughly what a AAA-rated, a natural AAA-rated entity, possibly even lower than that in terms of your borrowing rate. So it is a very much subsidized, low-interest-rate loan. And then we would be looking at, actually looking at a call date, which would be the earliest date that you could call those bonds in early and refinance them to a lower interest rate, if it makes sense and lower interest rates are available at that time. That would be December 1 of 2032. On the last bullet, the structured 0% loan is going to be leveled debt service for the entire 30 years, 0% interest rate, call date again at December 1, 2032. Right now, we would say, you have the call provision in there, but chances are, you're not going to call those bonds in early. They're at 0%, you're going to keep those out the entire time and not plan on, on paying those off anytime before the final maturity in 2052. One thing that we did do, just for your own information, I know the, the city manager talked about the benefit of the subsidized interest rate loan and the 0% loan. We did a quick calculation of what that savings would actually convert into with respect to dollars if you were looking at borrowing at normal interest rates without the subsidized loan interest rate or the 0% loan, and you'd probably be looking at just under $1.7 million in interest savings to the city over the 30 years. So it's, it's very significant. So when you have a $2 million grant plus the benefit of roughly about another $1,690, almost $1,700, you're talking about, you know, about $3.7 million worth of funds over the next 30 years that the city's not going to have to pay back. So very, very attractive benefit for the city pursuing this project in this manner. Next page, Estimated Sources and Uses. So we have three different sources, as you, as I've mentioned before, the below-market interest rate loan, $3,934. These are certificates of obligation, and as well as the 0% interest loan. The certificates of obligation are a double-barrel pledge. And so similar to the debt that we previously worked with the, the city in issuing, is you have to have your abhorrent tax as a legal pledge, as well as a secondary source of revenue, in this particular case, the water and sewer utility system. So those two provide the double barrel that the Water Development Board will have as a legal pledge for the city to be able to provide that as security. So like on your home, you would typically have a mortgage. The city's not in a position to be able to have a mortgage on the assets that you're borrowing for, so what you give is a legal pledge for the repayment of the debt. So if for some reason the city did not pay it back, the Water Development Board says we have two legal mechanisms that we can use. One is we can force you to increase your abhorrent tax rate to be able to pay them back. The second one is to increase water and sewer rates to pay them back, or some combination thereof. So those are the, the two legal securities that are provided in this particular type of debt instrument that would be issued to the Water Development Board. On the uses of funds, the engineering and construction costs make up the majority of the, of the project costs, about $6.7 million. The Water Development Board charges an origination fee to be able to borrow these funds. They're approximately $97,000. And then estimated costs of issuance are approximately $215,000 for a total of $7 million on the sources of funds and uses of funds. One of the things that you, you probably already are aware of is this is for a RO plant, so reverse osmosis is a, an expensive plant to operate. And so one of the things that we've had the benefit of doing is we've actually done the financing for most of the RO plants in, in Texas, actually for that matter. The largest one being done by San Antonio Water System. We were involved with that one, as well as this one, Raymondville Brownsville Public Utility Board through the Southmost Regional Water Association also has one, and there's a couple of other smaller ones. But we've offered to the city, if you would like to be able to tour, something that's about the same size. The city of Raymondville has one that's up and running. Or if you'd like to see a, a very large-scale one, San Antonio Water System has probably, I think it's the largest one, I know in Texas, and probably one of the largest ones in the country, we'd be happy to assist in, in getting those set up if that's something you'd be interested in. With respect to the debt service schedule on page six, on column B, I know you've already adopted your budget and set your tax rate. As you know, when you look at 2022 versus 2023, you can see where your property values have gone down. That's been putting, you know, some pressure on the city financially. But what you see in column D is the debt service is actually going up from $2,650 to about $2,776. That's without the issuance of this debt. Column E is the self-supporting debt service that already exists. So the majority of the debt is already being paid by Water and Sewer Utility System. And so if you look at the roughly 2.7 million that's going to be paid in debt for the year, about a third of it's being paid from the utility system. If you go to column F, for this particular debt issuance, as I mentioned before, we're stair-stepping it. So for 2023, we've got $111,443. Again, these are all estimates because we don't have the interest rate locked, but this is more or less what we'd be looking at. 2024 would go up to $156,006, then $190,328, then 2026, $193,315, and then roughly about $221,000 each year thereafter till 2052. And then column G is the 0% loan, and that would be $34,000 per year for, for straight 30 years. And we would be looking at that being paid all by the Water and Sewer Utility System. Column I is what we call the city's contribution towards managing the tax rate. The city's had the benefit of building up some funds in the debt service fund, as well as some other funds. And so last year, utilized just under $400,000, about $373,000 of that to manage the tax rate. Based on information we have, it looks like we're going to be utilizing roughly about half a million dollars to manage the tax rate. And so you can see in column K, I believe, the tax rate that was adopted for the interest and sinking fund was about 17 and a half cents. Any questions on any of that? I know there's a lot of numbers on there, but we tried to focus on mainly 2023 for your upcoming fiscal year. Then moving on to slide seven, this particular page has a whole lot of numbers on here, and I'm only going to really try to highlight what's in the bolded yellow numbers. And, and that's because we've spent, weeks would be an understatement, probably months, I would say, Michael and Gabe and Vanessa's not here just yet, but working on where the transition would occur as the city moves from the water that you bring in, that you pay for, from city of Corpus Christi versus the water that'll be produced from your own wells through the RO process. And so if the project were to proceed, I think this is probably going to shift by fiscal years, but you would see that in the second year, you would see the amount of cost that, or that's being derived from what you're paying for water on the RO plant versus water from the existing water plant will shift, so it'll transition. So in the first year, you'll see, that's highlighted, about $2,001,000 would come from your current water plant, and about $1,004,000 would be expenses associated with the, with the RO plant. That's going to be mainly because you're getting started, you're ramping up. And then you can see in 2024, that would go up to about $2,800,000. But you'll see the water operating expense will come down significantly from about $2,150,000 to about $800,000. So what, if everything were to work, you know, just right, you know, timing-wise, as one is coming down, the other one is increasing. And, and so I believe that the intent of the city is to operate both, but one will be at a much more reduced operational capacity while the other one is ramping up, so that the net impact to the city is not going to be as significant as if you were, you know, building something new, and that would be much larger and not necessarily replacing existing capacity. Anything on, on this page? And then moving on to slide eight, Preliminary Timetable of Events. So as, as we come to you today on September the 20th, we have a presentation on the plan of finance, and we're seeking your authorization to be able to give this notice of intent to publish in the newspaper two consecutive weeks, as well as to put in a prominent place on your city's website, where it needs to be, the notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. That will need to be in place for 45 days from the date of the first newspaper publication. And assuming that the publication will occur on the 25th of September and October the 2nd, then we would be looking to come back to you, I believe we'd be looking at right around the November the 15th, and that would be your regular city council meeting to approve the sale and the issuance of the certificates of obligation at that time. A week before that, on November the 8th, is when we would be looking to lock the interest rates from the Water Development Board. So when we receive those, we'll contact the city and say, here's what the Water Development Board has locked in. We'll update the numbers, and then when we come back to you on November the 15th, we'd be looking to have final numbers at that time in terms of the interest rate on the, on the larger loan. And then we'd be looking to close on December the 14th, roughly 30 days later. The Texas Attorney General's Office has to issue their opinion, and it takes roughly about 30 days from the date that you would actually authorize the issuance of the debt, until they would issue their opinion, and then we can close. That's the, the general timeline and, and information we had to present to you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Brook?
No.
Mr. Molina?
Very thorough. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chris?
At this time, no, I'll be with you. Thank you.
And if you have any questions, if anything comes up, we're, we're down here very often and happy to stop by and go through any of the numbers and any specificity that you might like.
I do have some questions.
Yes, Mayor.
I wanted to ask you, when we were doing our, our current credit rating, do you know where we're at with that?
So I believe the city-
Because this is based on AAA, right?
Good question, yeah. The city, I believe, is an A-plus rating with Standard and Poor's. One of the things that, that we want to do is come back probably with city manager, director of finance, and anyone else. Standard and Poor's typically does a, what they call surveillance, and you don't necessarily have to be issuing debt. They will just say, hey, we want you, this, you know, number of years of financial information, we want to do our own in-depth review. We actually have a couple of clients that are going through that right now as we speak. And, and so it's one of those things that we want to make sure that we, you know, obviously bring to the- bring to the city's attention and, and prepare because in, you know, some of the analysis and review that we've done in getting to this point is they're going to look at, you know, what's the fund balance versus the cash balance of your debt service fund, your general fund, solid waste, and utility. Those are the four, kind of, I would say, kind of major funds that they would look at. They'll look at everything, but, but they'll be looking at that. And in, a lot of times, people tend to equate fund balance with cash balance, and rarely are they the same. And so we had a client last year, in fact, that brought us in. We've replaced another financial advisor because they said, you know, it looks like our, our fund balance is fine, but our cash balance is, you know, going down pretty significantly. What's happening? And so we did some analysis and discussed that with them and, and said, you know, please don't ever think that one equals the other. Very rarely are they the same. And you can be running into a cash flow problem even though your fund balance may appear to be strong. And so what the rating agencies, Standard and Poor's in particular, is going to be doing is saying, we want to look at your unassigned fund balance, which means fund balance that has no restrictions on it whatsoever. And then we want to look at your available cash balance. So all the cash that's unencumbered, completely available. And, and so a lot of times what they want to see is a minimum of three months of operations. When I say minimum, you're, you're not at the lowest investment grade. You're at a pretty nice, you know, investment grade level. From, you know, A+, you go into the double A category and then, you know, natural triple A. So the expectation, we always say to people, is don't, don't shoot for the minimum because that's where you'd be if you were triple B. You know, you really need to be thinking more in terms of, you know, four to six months, you know, of cash, you know, that's, you know, there and available. And, and so the, the benchmark that you're kind of held to is a little bit of a higher standard because of your strong credit rating, if you want to keep it, right? There are some entities that we work with, they're like, you know what, I don't want to be triple A because the standard that I have to meet is so high that I'm, I'm going to have to be, you know, holding enormous amounts of cash that I won't ever be able to use. I have to have it there basically as a reserve. So, you know, you have to kind of look at, you know, what's the right balance, you know, for the city, you know, what are you comfortable with?
Where we're at currently.
Correct. And so we want, we do plan to come back and, like I said, visit with your city, you know, administration, management, and be able to say, you know, we've done some analysis, here's kind of where you are. You haven't had surveillance, I think, probably in the last four or five years. So I would anticipate-
Right. It's been longer than that.
Yeah.
And Don and I talked about that specifically about a month and a half ago about our credit rating and, you know, what can we do to go up? And, and also we mentioned, you mentioned about some cities our size that are getting hit on surveillance and held a higher standard than what we are now. So, you know, we've got to be cognizant of that as we move forward as well.
Yeah, they're, the rating agencies have, I would say, ever since the financial crisis of 2008, 2009, have tightened up, you know, what they, what they look at. And, you know, what used to not be in there was pension debt. You know, so a lot of people would say, well, you know, pension obligation is, you know, it's kind of a nebulous number because who knows when people are going to retire? Who knows how long they're going to live after they retire? You know, what kind of benefits are going to be there? Well, you know, the, the rating agencies as well as the accounting standards boards now said, that's debt, you know, just like, you know, a lease now is considered debt. So a lot of clients are coming to us and saying, you know what, I don't, I don't want to do a lease. I want to go ahead and issue debt because the debt can go on your INS tax rate versus a lease that has to go on your MNO tax rate. And based on what the legislature did two sessions ago, it's capped at a lower level now, so you can only move your MNO tax rate up by three and a half percent. And so you have a lot less flexibility in your MNO tax rate. And so the rating agencies see this and say, okay, not only do you have financial constraints, but you also have legislative constraints that the Texas Legislature said, this is how much you can raise your MNO tax rate, and, and that's it. And so they're saying, I want to not do leases, I want to go ahead and borrow money for equipment and things of that nature because that's on the INS tax rate, which is not subject to that three and a half percent cap. So you, you're kind of taking pressure off of that so that you have more money for employees and benefits and things of that nature that you may not necessarily be able to control, especially with, as you've seen, your property values that may fluctuate from year to year. So you want to have a little bit more flexibility on that side. I know we've gotten a little bit off topic, but all of those are related to, you know, things that you want to look at from a rating agency perspective.
I also wanted to ask you on, on page seven, on the highlighted items, and I just wanted to know, as far as expenses, is there a certain number or how did, how, what was calculated? How was that calculated?
That's a good question. So we, we started out, I would say, a number of people had, had their hands in, in getting this. We basically kind of asked the questions of the, of the engineer, and, and they said that they did their own analysis, and this is how they believe that as the RO plant is ramping up, what the operating cost of that would be. And then of the water plant kind of ramping down in terms of what water's going to be produced to that plant, what those expenses would be. And then I believe those were kind of further vetted with your city staff on the utility side, and then on the financial side, and then ultimately went through the city manager. And then we basically kind of took those inputs that were provided to us. And, and all of this information is not information that we developed as much as we kind of put it all in one place because the Water Development Board says, we want to see a pro forma of what this is going to look like under these circumstances. So if you're not going to use your water plant as much as you have in the past, and you're going to start using this RO plant, then if one is being used more and one is being used less, what are those costs? And so like, those are all the, the people that got involved with pulling together those numbers. And then that was presented to the Water Development Board. And then they kind of pick it apart from the same perspective. They have their finance people, they have their engineers and, and all of that, picking apart the numbers. And, and what they tend to do is they match up, the engineers talk to the engineers, the finance people talk to the finance people, and that type of thing, and they, they kind of pick it apart. So it's, it's kind of vetted up and then vetted back down to develop those numbers. I don't know, Michael, but-
Yeah, you're right. With, with also the Water Development Board on them, and we went through conference calls and conference calls with Don, with Bill, with the Finance Department. And, I mean, they, they, they pick everything apart and look at it. And, you know, on, on these numbers, and there also was just telling the city attorney that Don and his group are really conservative, so, as, and as you should be on this pro forma. Because our estimates are, you know, a little bit different. We're, you know, estimated that we're only going to buy, you know, $100,000 worth of water. They're going to put in a higher number. Now, let's put in 180, 220, because they just, the nature of their work is to be conservative. And it, you know, we're, we're fine with that because it, it helps keep us, keep us safe on this. But we went through the exercise with the Water Development Board over several, several, several phone calls and meetings.
I would say, I think that we are probably going to be seeing more cities doing this type of action. The, the advances in reverse osmosis and desalination and, and all of that has come down significantly. And, and so the, I would say the, the big challenges going forward are going to be, you know, one, we're all seeing our power costs go up, right? So as natural gas is one of the, the main inputs to developing energy, so our electrical costs are going up. Natural gas is one of the main inputs, so as that goes up, the cost per kilowatt hour of energy, of electric power that you buy goes up. RO plants are very intense neater of utility power. So you're going to probably see, you know, that's going to be one of the costs that's going to go up the most. But then you also see your personnel costs actually come down because, and I will tell you, like, San Antonio Water System at their RO plant, it's, it's massive, and I think that they can probably operate it on, you know, four or five people. And, because it's all electronics now.
Right.
Yeah. But, but what you're not paying in personnel, you're paying in, in a lot of energy costs and, and filters and, and things of that nature. So those costs have kind of come down significantly. You just have to be aware of these other costs that are going up. The other one that, that is, gets a little tricky with RO plants and having two water sources, is you have to blend the water, and you have to get the chemistry right. And when you hear about places like Flint, Michigan, where, you know, they went to a different water source, it wasn't that the, the water was bad, it was that the chemistry was wrong. And so you had chemistry of water flowing through water lines that had typically had different water of a different chemistry. And so it was taking some of the, you know, lining that had built up over the years on the inside of that old water line, and that ended up breaking loose because the chemistry was not the same. And so that infiltrated the water that then got people sick. So the, if you can get the chemistry right and you can blend the water properly, then the water lines, you know, and I was looking at all the water lines you're going to be doing, you know, getting that chemistry right is, is going to be critical.
And we have, I mean, and, yeah, obviously, and Don's not involved in those, that's not on that side. He's on the financial side.
Yeah.
But there is a lot of meetings that Bill Norris has with seven Cs on the Engineering Department, and we have regular, you know, conference calls because he's exactly right. The chemistries are very important. They have to, we have to match what we have in our system.
Right.
And so that's, you know, the meat though is he here?
But just making those adjustments here, making sure that when we're looking at these numbers, we're kind of incorporating those, those type of issues that may arise. The, on page six, I also just wanted, if you could just explain E again to me, did I understand this properly or correctly?
So as of today, column D and column E kind of go together. So that's the annual payment that's being made for debt that's being paid by the city in column D. So that's the annual payment, principal and interest.
Okay.
Column E is self-supporting, which means it's being paid by Water and Sewer Utility revenues and not by the abhorrent tax rate. So if you were to go to your column K, the 17 and a half cents of INS tax rate is what is going to be paying for the difference between the 2,776 in column D and the amount in column E, which is a negative 953,581.
So-
So it's about two point, I'm sorry, about 1.6 million that's being paid by the abhorrent tax rate and not by Water and Sewer Utility.
But I, okay, so when I'm looking at E, column E, it's a, that's a negative number, meaning that column, what's in column K currently is not enough to generate to that payment? Or is that what I'm looking at, or is that correct?
You're absolutely right. It's not E. What's in column K will generate the amount if you contribute in column I, the roughly 524,000, which is, I believe, pretty close to what the number is that the city's contributing from the debt service fund balance. So you, each year going forward, you know, you'll look at, you know, how much you're going to pay from Water and Sewer Utility System or Solid Waste, you know, various sources that you have available to you. And then you'll set your tax rate based on, you know, what you're not going to be paying from typically those two, which will be your Solid Waste Fund and your Utility Fund.
Okay. Okay. So you're in 2024, we're looking at from 17 to 22?
If, if your, if your values don't change, and if you have a 95% collection rate-
Okay.
And if you have the same amount of debt and zero contribution from your fund balances that you have available to you.
Okay. Well, hopefully you'll have more-
Right.
Value.
And, and, you know, what, what you've done in the past couple of years, you've been able to, to manage the tax rate, you know. What I kind of say to people is, if you look at your column B, one penny generates roughly about $77,000. So if you were to look at what 77,000 is on that 524,000, you're looking at, you know, probably roughly around eight or nine cents. And so that contribution, you know, brings down your, your tax rate by, by a pretty significant amount.
See, but the, the idea behind this too is that eventually we have to look at making the people who receive the water end up having increases in fees or, or, you know, by pennies here and there, and changing the rates that we charge for the water so that it's not spread out amongst the abhorrent taxpayers, it's spread out amongst the water users, right? So the idea that we're going to have a five cent jump is, is worst case scenario if we don't-
This is, this is a debt service schedule pro forma also, because it also changes every year as, you know, this is now based off the 777, 737,000, a million valuation, and that changes it.
It's also, it's also contingent on the interest rate that we-
Yeah, because it's not locked, you know.
Correct.
So there's a lot of different factors-
There's a lot of assumptions and-
But this is giving us what is estimated.
Correct.
And we're roughly looking at, at maybe the next five to six years where it could possibly, you know, where we would need to generate more in the INS fund, and then it goes lower.
Right. And I think-
Provide that we don't incur new debt.
Correct, Mayor. And I think to Council, Councilman Chris's point, you know, the other thing that, you is, you know, how you structure your rates, you know, can be another factor. And then, you know, how the RO plant operates, you know. Hopefully, you know, you'll see lower operating costs than what the engineers projected, you know. So there's, there's a number of things that can come into play here. Again, I, I wouldn't call this a worst case scenario, but I would say a conservative case.
You're giving it, yeah.
Right. And, and really to give you kind of a look into the future, you know, as far as, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to have to make a decision on your budget, you know, this month-
Right.
You know, about something a year from now. You want to kind of be looking at it and saying, okay, we know now-
Just be mindful of it.
Yeah, there's some things that we need to do, and, and how do we want to proceed in, in doing that?
Sure.
Also the collection rate, 95%, we're averaging above 96%.
Right.
But, you know, we're estimating 95%. So all those things make a difference on this.
There's a little cushion.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of assumptions. Sorry, Councilman.
No.
So, yeah, there's a lot of assumptions that are, that are embedded in here. And as time goes on, you know, some of those assumptions will obviously become hard numbers-
Sure.
-once you start operating the plant and once you, you see what your values come in at, once you have interest rates locked on the project.
But this is good information, just so that we are mindful and we keep, you know, just-
Right.
When we're going through-
Yeah, your construction costs, you know, right now, those are estimates. You know, you've got a $7 million project, if it comes in lower, you know, all, all those things. So there's, there's a lot, a lot of numbers and-
Sure.
Consequently, why we've been working on this for years now.
For a while. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? No? Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything become illegal. In fact, it's-
You don't need to get on the phone. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Okay. Counsel, if there's no further questions or any discussion on this, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion authorizing and approving publication and posting a notice of intention of issued combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed 5.5 million and providing an effective date.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sound. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 7.2. Hold a public hearing to discuss, consider, and act upon adopting an ordinance to rezone Lot 12A, Block 7, South Heights addition, known as vacant lot corner of- Lot 12A, Block Seven, South Heights addition, known as vacant lot corner of, and I always say, I say Shelly or Schley, I don't know.
Shelly.
And South Reynolds, I'll spell it out just.
Sounds like Schley.
It's S-C-H-L-E-Y, just for the record. And South Reynolds from B one business district to R one residential district, as shown by map ID F dash seventeen backslash S-H-G-T-S, transcribed map records, Jimwells County, Texas. Okay. So this asked for a public hearing, so I will at this time, it is five fifty-five P.M. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in reference to agenda item seven point two is welcome to step forward at this time.
And Mayor, if you will allow, I will give you a short little synopsis while we're waiting to see if anybody would like to speak in favor or against.
This is one that you have brought before.
Yes, this one, this one came to us, it's about a month ago, last, so this particular item is a property owner who's requesting to rezone from a business B one district to a R one district. Their proposal, it's a portion of their of of businesses they've had in their family for some time. And what they're going to do is the the portion that they're rezoning is is adjacent to some more residential properties, and they're going to build a a single family home there. This did go to planning and zoning and, uh, was unanimously approved. And in addition to that, we didn't receive any letters opposing or in favor of the rezone.
Can we throw in a vowel in my name or?
What was that?
Can we throw in a vowel? Change the name of the.
All right.
Fix it.
Again, we are still in our public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in reference to this agenda item, you're welcome to step forward and speak on this. Not seeing anyone stepping forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It is five fifty-seven P.M. And we will close the hearing, public hearing now. Okay? Counsel, any questions or comments or discussion on this? Mr. Crisp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
I'm good, Mayor.
Mr. Burke?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Bowen?
This is a standard lot size, right?
I believe so.
Oh, there it is. Fifty-five. Sorry. Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. No other.
Nope.
Okay.
Not on this one.
Okay, counsel, I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mayor, make a motion to accept the rezone of Lot 12A, Block Seven, South Heights addition, known as vacant lot corner of Shelly and South Reynolds before B one business, uh, from, sorry, from B one district to an R one residential, um, district as known on map ID F seventeen, uh, slash S-H-G-T-S, transcribed by map records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item seven point three. Discuss, consider and act upon accepting and approving a final plat of Montevice Estates being to a two point zero acre tract of land being comprised of four five point zero acre tracts of land designated as Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three, and Lot Number Four. Survey this day being out of a six sixty-four point six-six acre tract of land described in a deed of conveyance to Gilbert Montevice and Norma Montevice in a deed recorded in document number four eight zero one two one of the official public records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor, counsel, this this property is, the proposal for this property is to break it down into four individual lots, uh, very large lots, actually, they're five acre lots. This is on the northwest portion of the city, just on the, right on the, right on the edge of the city limit line. Again, went to planning and zoning, no objections and no concerns.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
I'm good.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
I was going to ask just on this one, um, this is close to Acapulco, out that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have utilities out there or how does?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, we do already? I wasn't sure, because I know some have septic's out there.
Yeah, and so the sewer waters is available to this according to our engineering department. So this goes, when when these applicants come in, we send them over to engineering. They take a look to make sure that that there's utilities available. And if they're not available, then they make sure that the property owners are aware that they're not available. And if there's any other options, for instance, if they needed to have a septic tank, those those arrangements are made with the property owners to make sure that they don't, they follow the proper procedures to do that.
Okay.
That sewer line over there was running about two thousand and three. So this is south of Acapulco Circle.
This is on the.
Right behind it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. No other discussion or questions on this agenda item, counsel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, make a motion approving the final plat for Montevice Estates, being a two acre tract of land, uh, being comprised of four five acre tracts of land designated in Lot Number One and Lot Number Two and Lot Number Three and Lot Number Four. Survey this, surveyed this day being out of a sixty-four point six-six acre tract of land, uh, described in a deed of conveyance to Gilbert Montevice and Norma Montevice in a deed recorded in document number four eight zero one two one of the official public records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, thank you, counsel. We'll move on to seven point four. Discuss, consider and act upon accepting and approving a final replat of Harkins Industrial Park, Section Three, Lots One A and One B, being a plat of one point nine five five acres called the south two acres of Lot One, Harkins Industrial Park, Section Three, as shown on map, recorded in volume seven, page twenty-nine, map records of Jimwells County, Texas, said one point nine five five acre tract being the tract described in a deed recorded in file number four two six zero five six, deed records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor, counsel, this property owner is subdividing their property into two different tracts of land. Their intent is to divide so they can sell a portion of their property. Uh, I'm not exactly sure what they're planning on doing with it, but there's no zoning change request on this.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina? Mr. Burke?
No.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay. And this is just a.
Yep, it's just they're they're subdividing the front half of their yard to the back half. Uh, and they're, I believe they're going to sell the back half of that property.
Okay. There's no other questions or any discussion? I'll entertain a motion at this time for this agenda item.
Mayor, make a motion approving the final plat of Harkins Industrial Park, Section Three, Lots One A and One B, being a plat of one point nine five five acres called the south two acres of Lot One, Harkins Industrial Park, Section Three, as shown on map, on a map recorded in volume seven, page twenty-nine, Mac River, of Jimwells County, Texas.
Second.
Do I need to continue with that?
Do we need to continue? I started with the whole and.
Yes.
Said said one point nine five five acre tract being the tract described in a deed recorded in file number four two six zero five six, deed records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so seven point five. Discuss, consider and act upon selecting one, at least one council member to serve on the evaluation committee to review proposals to be received in response to the issuance of a request for proposals, RFP, for administrative, plan writing and project management services related to the CDVG MIT hyphen MIT Local Hazard Mitigation Plans Program, LHMPP, through the General Land Office, GLO.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
This is, uh, we're asking you to appoint a member of the council to be on the evaluation committee for proposals to be received once we distribute, um, the RFP, which would be to hire a consultant to help us apply for funding through GLO to update our multi-hazard mitigation plan, which the city and the county adopted back in November twenty eighteen. So again, this is just starting to get the evaluation committee, uh, put together.
Okay.
To receive those proposals in the future.
Okay, counsel.
Wouldn't mind throwing my name in the hat if anybody else would like to do it, more than welcome to it, but otherwise.
I think I did it the last time.
Yes.
I wouldn't mind doing it either, but that's fine.
Go ahead.
No, 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 it's okay. Next one. We're good.
I motion that we appoint Sandra to the board.
Bless you.
I don't know if that was a laugh or a sneeze, I was going, what's going on here?
Okay.
Okay.
I know, I'm just.
Mayor, Park Tim or or counsel?
If you want it, you can have it. If not, I'll take it.
Well, I mean.
It's at least one.
Just at least one. Okay.
I think I think.
I would like.
I think so too. I think so too.
Because sometimes you're from like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we won't bid on.
Yeah. I'm on this one.
We're good.
Okay, so.
I'll do it.
Um, counsel, may I have a motion to appoint?
I reject my motion. It's a joke.
Yes. To appoint Mr. Pete Crisp as, um, one of the members of our council to serve on the evaluation committee.
I make a motion.
Yes.
Sorry, they're all confused. I make a motion to have Mr. Pete Crisp be on the evaluation committee for this agenda item.
Okay. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so, agenda item seven point six. Discuss, consider and act upon review and allocating funds for Visit Alice Grant application submitted for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Who would be presenting this? Mr. Espersa?
I can talk about it. We need to.
Okay.
Um, I didn't put it on the agenda, but it's just, it's this, the continuation of the process, the grant process that we put in place. We had a registration, our applications, this is the review, where we'll now actually allocate the money for the rest of the year and no other applications will come before us. You know, it's the same process that we, I continue to talk about that that Barbara has to use all the time. And you apply with everybody else and then you find out when your fundies, funding is available and that's the end of it, not not throughout the year, so.
Seven point six, we did have applicants?
Yes, so we had, so we had four people, our four organizations come through and register, which were, um, Black History, uh, delegation, the Downtown Association, Habitat for Humanity, and Tejano Roots.
Tejano Roots.
And now, um, of the four, we distributed the applications, we being, uh, Ms. Nellie and 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 Odie. And we only had two return, uh, the applications for actually wanting funding. That was Tejano Roots and that was, uh, the Habitat for Humanity. And of the two, um, we had a total funding available of something like twenty-six thousand?
Six nine eighty-three.
Six twenty-six nine eighty-three, and we're having a total request of twenty-two thousand for the organizations. Uh, it's a total of three events. Um, been through them. It's the two events that we normally do, we normally fund for Tejano Roots already, and then Habitat for Humanity's ongoing event for, uh, music and entertainment. It's a two-day event as well.
Mm-hmm.
After review, my personal opinion and 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 everything is that both of them qualify for the funding requested. If you have any questions, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Mr. Espersa, we have, um, did we have any data that from the previous, because we did, did, correct me if I'm wrong on this, did we fund last year, um, some of these festivals?
The Tejano Roots.
Did we get some? That was during, okay.
Yeah, but we didn't collect, I mean, I don't think we collected anything, although did we use, Arlene, we used some place for information on that one, on any of these in May?
May, May.
We did get some data?
We, yeah.
No, I'd say those were the two.
Oh.
They turned in their their after after event registration to, in order to receive the second half of the funding because we only gave them the the first half.
Right.
And then they turned their data in afterwards, and we had information that that showed that they exceeded expectations for that event. And we all know that the January event fills up our hotels for the Tejano Roots induction. Uh, they have the multi-day event there too. Habitat for Humanity's, uh, application is a minimal application, uh, where they think they're going to get maybe twenty rooms, they're applying for, uh, two thousand dollars, but they actually expect to to actually qualify for only about fifteen hundred. They're not asking for anything in in advance, like we do for, uh, Tejano Roots for the events. So they're not asking for anything in advance. Theirs would only be a, here, we're proving it, here are receipts, and if, you know, whatever, however much we qualify for, we'll take. So theirs is, theirs is on the back end versus, uh, Tejano Roots would be fifty upfront for each event and then the rest of it after the fact.
And what was the amount again, give?
Twenty-nine. It's available? Twenty-six nine eighty-three.
And what do they, they ask him twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Straight. It's ten thousand dollars per event for, uh, Tejano Roots and the two thousand dollars for for Habitat. And like I said, Habitat actually does not even really anticipate getting there, it's just they request that as an allocation.
Well, we will do tracking on these. Um, now we have the ability to to get some data to be able to confirm stays and visits and things like that. We're, it's the same kind of information that we use for the parks on the presentation on how many visits were there. Uh, so we'll be able to double check that as well.
And then, uh, I know that Habitat's, one of Habitat's process for tracking this as well, as well, is, uh, the idea that they're going to try to partner with this, maybe a specific hotel, if nothing else, to get rates, to get a group rate or multiple hotels to get a group rate, and then government collect the data on who actually got that group rate is one surefire way to to know who actually stayed for that specific event. So that's what we're, you know, pushing, also have also been pushing with, uh, for Tejano Roots is, you know, try to get a group rate, work with people, make sure you get people to stay there, make sure people identify that they stayed there underneath the group rate, and that's easy collection.
At the end of the day, puts it on them.
That's. Yep. Bring the proof or you don't qualify for the portion of money that's still existing, that's still being withheld, so.
All these events, I mean, these three events are, they're well attended and and really wonderful for our community.
And they've gone through the vetting of being a nonprofit organization, the both of them, obviously. I think one of the, one of the little hangups that, you know, after talking with Downtown, um, they're still in the process of getting their their nonprofit, um, after talking to their secretary, they're still in the process of getting their nonprofits, so they didn't want to apply, allocate money, and maybe take away from somebody else what we might be able to utilize somewhere else. But they'll definitely be on the list for next year once they get the paperwork.
Right. Well, it's encouraging to always have anyone out there wanting to bring festivals to the city of Alice. Anything that could promote, uh, anyone visiting our our city. Um, if there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda, I'll entertain a motion at this time, counsel?
Mayor, I make a motion allocating, um, hot funds as presented through the, uh, Visit Alice Grant application for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three in the sums of, uh, ten thousand dollars per event for, uh, Tejano Roots with a fifty percent upfront per event
and retaining the additional value for the after-event paperwork, and for the Habitat for Humanity fundraiser allocating two thousand dollars, all to be received after the event.
We have a first and a second. All in...
Right.
Mr. Burke? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all opposing, sign. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item seven point seven. Discuss, consider, and act upon adopting a resolution of the city of Alice, adopting written policies for the investment of public funds and designating investment officers in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter Two-Two-Five-Six.
Good evening, mayor, counsel. Like you mentioned, this is your investment policy that we put in place, that's in front of you for your approval. The purpose of this document is to set forth specific investment policy and strategy guidelines for the city. As you acknowledge, it's a requirement of the Texas Code. Just a few items on page one, objectives and strategy. Number one is safety, obviously, that's a foremost objective of the city. We want to have investments in high credit quality securities. On page two, you'll see liquidity. We want to make sure our investments are less than ninety-one days to keep cash flow going. Diversification, we want to make sure that we have diversification and maturity in the market sector. We have competitive billing, bidding, and we have a number of brokers and dealers involved. Finally, we have yield. We want to make sure we obtain a market rate for our return. If you go further down on page two, investment officers. At this time, you have myself, the Director of Finance. And in my absence, you have the Deputy Finance Director, Vanessa. We have a two-year certification. I went at the end of last year, Vanessa will go at the end of this year, so we're kind of staggered, that way you always have somebody certified.
Good, yes.
On page three, you'll have the city council responsibilities. You'll, again, like I mentioned, you'll designate the investment officers. You'll prove and provide the officer training, and you'll review and adopt investment policy on an annual basis. On page four, you'll see the authorized investments. At this time, we're investing through logic, it's a triple-A investment pool, lower rates, but as Dawn mentioned, rates are increasing, so hopefully we get to see some improvement there. And on page six, finally, you'll see collateralization.
I've been keep looking about that, but we haven't seen that, we don't have any of that.
They only have the resolution, they don't have the policy.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize.
Yeah, no, I was like, I was like, no, no, no.
There's an attachment to the site.
I'll email it. I apologize. You can go back. I apologize. So you'll just see that we're, we have added security, because we rate at a hundred and two above market values. So you'll say, foremost, we want to be transparent and secure in all of our investments. Again, this will come to you every year. It's something that's been on the books for, and I didn't make many changes to it, if anything, at all.
You have it there in front of you?
Yes.
Let's run off some copies for them right now.
I apologize, I have my notes on it. I didn't realize you didn't have copies. But that's what that is.
It is a document that has been presented.
Correct. Yes, it's something we have to do annually.
You're right.
And you have to approve and allow for Vanessa and myself to be investment officers.
One of the things on there also is not having, in the exception, and we'll see it on there, your investments in one place, unless if it's a qualified fund, like what we have, we can have them all in one place, but if it's not a qualified fund, then you can't have more than a, we have a hundred percent on that.
Right.
And we have it in...
I apologize, we'll get it to you soon.
Yeah, we have it in logic.
I kept looking through the... Counsel, are y'all wanting to act on this, or wait and bring it back until y'all review? You know, do we have a deadline for this? Yes, okay.
Well, we can...
It's the same document.
Yeah, it's the same document.
More than willing to move forward on, conceptually, considering that this is the exact same thing we do every year.
Right.
So, yeah, instead of pushing back and taking a chance, or even moving on to the next agenda item, so...
Right.
If the mayor's willing.
Okay. Then, at this time, on this agenda item, seven point seven, I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city of Alice adopting written policies for the investment of public funds and designating investment officers in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter Two-Two-Five-Six.
The only thing you have to do is state the investment. The officers?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Vanessa Doris? And I can never say your name, Gabriel... Azaduba? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Gabriel A. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Gabriel.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposing, same sign, okay? Then, a motion passes, thank you. Seven point eight. Conduct a public hearing to discuss, consider, and receive comments on the twenty-nineteen Texas CDVG contract, seven-two-one-nine-four-eight-nine, wastewater infrastructure improvements on San Felipe, Escobar, and Trevino Streets. Welcome back.
Good evening again. Mayor and counsel, the purpose of this public hearing, it's the final public hearing on the CDVG wastewater grant that the city received and worked in conjunction with the county to provide first-time sewer connection service to ten households and to thirty-four beneficiaries on the three streets, Trevino, Escobar, and San Felipe.
I will go ahead and open the... Sure, thank you. I will open the public hearing in reference to this agenda item. It is six-twenty-two P.M. And anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item, you're welcome to step forward and speak on this agenda item. And this, again, is just on infrastructure, you said for wastewater.
Infrastructure on those three streets.
San Felipe, Escobar, and Trevino.
First-time sewer connection.
And it was for ten? How many resident, residential?
Ten households and thirty-four beneficiaries.
Okay. Again, anyone wishing to step forward and speak on behalf of this agenda item, you're welcome to step forward.
While we wait, Barbara can ask the question quick. Did we have a match in this one?
Yes, and the city and the county provided a match in kind.
Okay.
Joe Sines' crews worked to do the sewer connections, and Commissioner Marjorie Gonzalez's crews did other work.
Is there a value on that?
I think ours was forty-five, and the county's was twenty-five.
So right around sixty? Thank you.
Usually, for the CDVG, when we work with the consultants on that, they recommend twenty percent of what you're applying for to get the maximum points for the match.
I think you had said seventy, and I said sixty, because I was thinking twenty percent, but it said seventy.
Well, it was either...
Somewhere right around there?
Seeing no one wishing to step forward and speak in reference to this agenda item, I will close the public hearing at this time. It is six-twenty-four P.M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate. So moving on to seven point nine. Here's status report on August twenty-twenty-two, month-end financial statements, summary of funds, and delivery of August twenty-twenty-two check registry.
We have this one, right? All right, here we go, the financials. Eleventh month ending, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. General fund revenues are eleven million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, one-twenty-eight. Our property tax budget was two million, six-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, one-sixty-seven, and year-to-date, we have received two million, eight-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, two-ninety-six. Exhibit B will have the MNO and INS, four million, two-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four. Last year, we had just over three-point-nine million, and we had a roughly, so we're roughly ninety-one thousand above that mark. Going back to exhibit A, sales tax was budgeted at five-point-five million, and we are showing four million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven through June. Exhibit C. This is sales tax budget versus actual, and this includes the month of July. July's collection was five-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, six-oh-nine, a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand above target. Twenty-twenty-two budget is four-point-four million, and we have an actual five million, three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, seven-twenty-one. So for the year, we're nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand above that mark. Exhibit D, we have actual twenty-twenty-two versus actual twenty-twenty-one, and we have an increase of just under seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand over previous year-to-date.
What was that number again?
Seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, nine-fourty-one.
Thank you.
Exhibit E is the general fund expenditures. Year-to-date, we have twelve million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, seventy. Just to touch on a couple of the larger departments, general services sitting at ninety-three percent of their budget. Fire Department is at a hundred-and-twelve percent. Again, that's the TIFMS, and we are working on it. We're seeing some reimbursements come in. We're hoping to get a big chunk of it by the end of this month and continue on on that. Police Department, as well, is sitting at ninety-five percent of budget. Municipal Court is at ninety-three percent. And Parks and Playgrounds is at ninety-four percent. Exhibit F, revenues versus expenditures for all funds. The general fund, we show a negative nine-seventy-four, nine-fourty-three. Again, that's the TIFMS, so roughly, right now, on the books, we're hoping to get about six-hundred thousand of that back in reimbursement. Utility, I mean, solid waste is six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-twelve in the negative, and that's the rentals and equipment. And Mr. Getta did report that as of next week, we'll be turning in the last of the rentals, so we should see a difference in that going forward. Utility Fund is sitting at a negative two-hundred-and-nine thousand, sixty-four. Something on that is, we were running a little, when we ran financials on our new contract for disposal, we didn't bill for a month, so once we got that in, it should switch that. The airport fund is at a negative eighty-one thousand, forty-one with the transfer. The golf course fund is a thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight with the transfer, and the hotel occupancy is at a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, three-sixty-six. The final slide is revenue over expenditures comparing twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. The general fund was at a negative nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, nine-fourty-three last year. I apologize, this year, and last year, we were at a negative two-fourty-nine, oh, fifty-two. Solid waste was at a fifty-nine thousand, nine-eighty-four, and now we're showing a negative six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-twelve. And lastly, utility fund was six-eighty-three, three-eleven, and we're at a negative two-oh-nine, oh, sixty-four. Those are the financials for August.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina? Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowden? Can you tell me a little bit, again, on the utility fund? You said on twenty-two, we're showing two-oh-nine negative. What is contributing to that?
On the utility fund?
Yes.
It's because we were billing out, we have that new contract that we have the waste going, the disposal, and we were...
The new contract?
Yes, ma'am, for the better that wanted. And so, we were, we were part about a month behind on billing. So when we ran the financials, it didn't show up at that time. And so, right after that, we billed it, so it's actually zeroed out right now. So, really, if I would have reported this, it would be zeroed out.
So our expenses versus what we...
Yes.
It's zeroed out?
Right.
I did look at the check industry, but...
You didn't look at it?
I did.
Oh, it's all right.
But I...
We have it go right?
No, no, but I saw where those, a lot of it would be engineering and some of those that we paid out, so... They were pretty, I...
You got it?
Yeah. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number eight, adjournment at this time, counsel. I will entertain a motion for agenda item number eight.
May I make a motion for adjourn?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, same sign? Motion passes, meaning adjourn. Thank you so much. It is six-thirty-one P.M.